Paco Fernandez, the victims of the Aztec shooting. And followed by the moment of silence, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by our new city councillor, councillor Borejo.
(Clerk) I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you councillor Borejo. Civic plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from council staff at the signup table. And tonight's meeting and proceedings, we are asking that each of you, after somebody speaks, to not applaud or make any applause or outburst. Please keep these meetings as civil as possible and respect one another during these proceedings. There are other rules, but I think we are all pretty familiar with the rules. At this time, we are going to invite up, there will be a presentation from Lurley Noe and the Sunshine ambassadors, would you please come up?
She's not in here at the moment.
Okay, we'll go ahead and defer that. She's gonna be coming in shortly?
Yeah, she's...
Okay, we'll defer that for now. Next, we have a presentation and councillor Penya.
I apologize, I didn't have my script in front of me. But we have a presentation, the opioid epidemic in New Mexico by Pia Salazar and Sullivan Jezonowski and Matthew Vincent from Fer, I, you know, I can't say the name of that firm, and Washbor Drew Andrew Seder.
Good evening. I'm Pia Salazar. I'm here to talk to you today about the opioid epidemic in Albuquerque and encourage, basically, the purpose is basically to encourage the city to pursue litigation against the manufacturers and distributors of the opioid products. Just real briefly, opioids are painkillers. They were once viewed as being highly addictive and then over time, there was a campaign by the manufacturers and the distributors to make them appear less addictive. Rather than being viewed as dangerous, they were now viewed as being safe for long-term use. What the manufacturers were promoting to the doctors and the pharmacies is basically saying that the rate of addiction was much lower than anticipated and again, that it was safe for long-term use. They were saying it was only 1% of patient population would be addicted after about a year's time, when in fact, the numbers were far greater that after, you know, for example, the reality was after 30 days of a prescription of opioid painkillers, the rate of addiction could be up to 35% for one year. And even after a 10-day dose, prescription dose, there's a rate of addiction that is estimated to be up to 20%. One of the things that makes it so addictive, makes these painkillers so addictive, is that their chemical makeup is very similar to heroin and it, you know, plays on the receptors of the brain and, you know, can fuel this, the addiction rate. As such, the rate of addiction of this epidemic has skyrocketed. And when they totaled the deaths, the overdose deaths in 2016 based on opioids, the number of deaths was actually greater than, you know, the deaths associated with the Vietnam War, car crashes, HIV death and gun deaths all put together. How did this all happen? In 1996, that's when Purdue Pharma introduced Oxycontin. And the drug overdose deaths from that point on, from 1996 onward, has just skyrocketed in the United States. In fact, it's now become the leading cause of death in Americans under the age of 55. You know, as all the other types of deaths are, you know, coming down or going up at a slighter, higher, slight, smaller rate, the deaths associated with opioid deaths is much greater. So, in fact, in the United States, it's such a huge epidemic in our country that our life expectancy is going down, whereas all the other first world country life expectancies are actually rising. This slide, this is one that always strikes me. That very first column is the United States overdose consumption, I'm sorry, Oxycontin consumption in 2015, and that's compared to all of the other first world countries. You know, the blue shows the consumption of the other countries and ours is the one on the left-hand corner. So who's to blame for this? We are looking at filing suit against drug manufacturers and the distributors. The drug manufacturers are the companies that you may or may not be familiar with, Purdue, Endo, Allergen, and basically for promoting misinformation related to opioids for financial gain. And how did they do this? Quickly, they essentially told physicians that it was unethical not to completely cover people that are in, you know, suffering from great amount of pain. And they came up with this fifth vital sign that had the patients basically tell the provider how much pain they were in, and it was a very subjective type of scale. They, you know, they went before Congress and said that the addiction rate is extremely rare. As a result of this, a lot of these manufacturers were fined, you know, millions and millions of dollars, but it didn't have very much effect because their profit rate is so high that they, you know, it hasn't, it hasn't curbed the misuse and miss, of these opioids. Manufacturers aren't the only ones to blame. In addition, there's distributors and some drug stores that are at fault. You know, in 1970, the Congress enacted the Controlled Substance Act. And what they did is they allowed three manufacturers to distribute these opioids, such as Oxycontin, because they recognized that there was such a potential for abuse. So rather than have a lot of distributors, they gave it to three people. And the one duty that they had was to report any suspicious use to the government. It didn't happen. And instead, the consumption and the misuse kept going. So the reason why I'm here today, I'm a local law firm, I'm, you know, born and raised in Albuquerque, and we do this type of work. We file actions on behalf of plaintiffs and we've teamed up with two Texas firms. They're two of a handful of firms in the United States that are, you know, actually qualified to be doing these multi-complex litigation. And what we would like is just encouraging the city to take action on this behalf. Our city has suffered tremendously as a result of the opioid addiction rate, and we'd like the city to take action, whether through an RFP or hiring somebody, it doesn't matter, you know, we just want you to hire somebody that's good and to move forward with this because all the other states in the country are doing so. We'd like New Mexico to be one of, you know, in there and well represented. I know we're short on time, so I don't know if you have any questions, but one of the benefits, I think, to hiring a firm and doing, you know, either through contract or through an RFP, is that you can do a very specialized damage model. And our city has, as you know, suffered tremendous losses financially through the police force, you know, due to the hospital, UNMH, or the ambulance costs of transporting people that have been overdosed. So there's, I mean, it goes on and on. And part of hiring a lawyer is to help develop a very effective damage model on your behalf. So that's, that's why we're here. We want to kind of give you an overview about what the problem is and encourage you to move forward and make sure that the city of Albuquerque is well represented in this opioid litigation. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Councillor Penya and then councillor Davis.
Well, I just want to thank you for your presentation, Pia. Unfortunately, I think you probably visited with several other councillors, but I wish we had an opportunity to show your entire presentation, really, because this is something that, you know, we have an epidemic in the state of New Mexico and something absolutely needs to be done. You know, we're losing friends, family members to this drug that was actually forced on us by pharmaceutical companies, and I really appreciate your efforts. I know that the county has already actually moved forward in terms of presenting something in terms of legislation. I'm hoping that here at the city, we can, we can do the same thing, you know. I know you're the firm that has come before us, but I'm not sure how we work all that out, but I think that it's important that we do something because if not, we're going to continue on this upward spiral of just losing our young kids, especially because, you know, they get hooked on this. There's a lot of kids that, you know, I've heard and I know of kids who have been in sports and they get injured and, you know, the doctor prescribes this medication for them and, and then before you know it, they're hooked on prescription pills and then after a while, as you know, it turns into heroin. So I'm hoping that we can do something to address this. So, thank you.
You're welcome. And you make a very good point because that is one of the models of how the addiction starts off, is that somebody will have just a, you know, a car accident injury or a sports injury and they get too much of the opioids, or maybe it's not the appropriate painkiller, and they end up becoming quickly addicted. And then it's, you know, taken away from them and many people that you would, you know, turn to heroin because of the addiction rate and because they're so close in composition. And so, yes, no, whatever the city decides, I think it's just very important that we act and we do do something for the city and whether, like I said, if it's not our firm, if it's somebody, we just think that it's very important for the city to do something and try to, you know, end this, this process of addiction and hopefully recover back some of our losses and then to be able to educate future generations and, you know, sort of like the tobacco litigation and see if we can put an end to this in our community.
And just to end to that, that just correlates with our uptick in, you know, the homelessness and the behavior health issues that we have. So all those things have to be addressed simultaneously.
Well, and it has an impact in so many ways, our increased crime rate, exactly. You're exactly right.
Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I appreciate that very much. Councillor Penya, you're right, and I think we ought to take a look at the proper venue for this. I, you know, I suspect we ought to work with the administration to see if there's a process by which we could help craft legislation to require an RFP so that firms who have this expertise can present us with some strategies to do it. I think it is important, and looking at the tobacco settlement is a good example of how ultimately, it was cities and counties and states who stood up, joining together to fight this, to get the data and the public health interest out front, because we are cleaning up those differences. I will recall from this council last year when we passed our down-and-out regulations for the fire department, and looking at the data, 41,000 times in the city last year, police officers, two police officers, a fire unit, a rescue unit, an Albuquerque ambulance went to a down-and-out call for someone who was passed out in a public place. Half of them were about alcohol, but the other half were addiction services. And when we extrapolate that out at, you know, $500 per call for service for just 15 minutes of being on the street, that was more than $10 million in taxpayer dollars that we spent just on responding to that without the transfer cost to the hospital. It impacts our community, it corrects our property crime epidemic, and we have to have some help on the prevention side. And clearly, so far, the corporations have done very little to nothing to help us in that fight and they're passing their corporate responsibility down to us. And so I do think it's up to us to take a look at those options on a preventive, long-term. So I appreciate the folks for bringing this to our attention and I'd look forward to working with you in the administration to decide if that's a strategy we could do. Thanks.
Councillor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to offer my thanks for you coming in and giving this presentation. I did meet with someone, I don't recall if he was from your firm or not, this is a few weeks ago.
It was, yes, it was. I wasn't there, but...
Oh, there you are. Hi. And I absolutely agree that, you know, there is a strong corollary to be made, fighting against the pharmaceuticals on this topic of opioids and the tobacco thing. So, and unfortunately, it all comes down to money. They can keep paying these fines, millions and millions and millions of dollars, and it's still worth it to them to keep producing. So it's, you know, and by the way, before I forget, there's an excellent book that I'd like to recommend to anybody who's interested. It is called Dreamland, Dreamland by Sam Quinones. And it gives, he gives such a good history of how we got into this mess.
Exactly. It provides a great timeline.
Yeah, starting in maybe the early 90s, I think, and how heroin changed and the advent of opioids such as Oxycontin and Oxycodeine. It's a great book, very readable, big, thick book, but it's really a page dudder.
And another, another good resource, I don't know if you saw the 16 Minutes presentation on the epidemic throughout the nation, that is also a really good one. And, you know, the DEA lawyer who was, you know, interviewed in that is actually working with our team because he was so fed up on the lack of enforcement that, you know, he decided to try to be on the other end, to try to actually get the, you know, get these manufacturers and distributors to be more responsible and to fulfill their duty under the Controlled Substances Act. So, but that's another really good resource, along with Dreamland, if you're, meets some background.
Okay. Last thing I want to say is that I've been in a number of conversations about this topic, about addiction, the devastating effects that it's had, wherever you live in the United States and maybe even globally, I'm not sure about that. But the one thing that comes up the least is treatment. And we can't just keep ignoring that. We need to invest in treatment programs. I really believe it's, at every level of government, it's not easy and it's not cheap, but we cannot keep letting people kill themselves. And that's what's happening. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Councillor Borejo, then councillor Harris.
Thank you, Pia, for being here this evening. I remember my father, who fought in World War II, used to tell us when we were kids that, you know, the way that this country would be taken over was through drugs. And what I've seen in our community is kind of a public health crisis. And I think that addiction crosses all economic levels. And, you know, if anyone has ever had experience, and I have, by the way, first had an experience trying to get people to some sort of treatment, the treatment is not always available. And I think that it's really important that we, even if it's one person at a time, start learning how to fight back. The public treatment that is available is limited, and I think that we as a council need to look, and as a community, need to look into those issues in the future. I fully intend to do that. I grew up in a small town, as everybody knows, and supposedly the worst in the country, which I'm not sure that I totally agree with. But I think that we, at some point, need to recognize that these issues are issues that affect all of our families and friends. As our councillor said, they're not only young people's issues, they're older people. I know that, you know, doctors prescribe these types of opioids on a regular basis. And if people are not sort of winged off of them after they have surgery, sometimes they can easily become addicted and oftentimes, they're elderly as well. So I just wanted to point that out as well.
You make a number of really, really good points. And, you know, in many ways, the physicians were, you know, I guess, reeducated by, you know, a lot of these, and we know now, false studies that were coming out saying that these really were safer for long-term use. And so, but it all came, you know, further back, not so much the physicians, but the manufacturers and the distributors. And then to your point about, you know, you being very familiar with this topic, we've made this presentation to a number of, you know, municipalities, counties, cities, tribes, and there's not one time that we've talked to people about this that they don't say that they're very familiar or they know somebody very close to them that has had a problem with this.
Well, and Albuquerque being the big city in the state, we set the example for smaller cities and smaller counties. So I think this is a very important issue, and I thank you for being here this evening.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Councillor Harris, then we have one follow-up question by councillor Penya.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Salazar. Just a couple of questions. I want to be clear. First of all, I think you're suggesting a legal services contract, and I'm guessing that you understand, or like everyone knows by now, that we have a big budget deficit. So are you thinking that something like this could actually be on a contingency fee basis for a city?
Absolutely. And that's, that's how we would propose doing it, on a contingency basis, where the firm that's representing the city would do, would front all the costs, you know, and do the entire litigation and get paid when, and, you know, if and when there is some sort of resolution, whether it's a jury trial or a settlement or something like that. But no, we do, I mean, we're very familiar with the, with the budget problems in our state. So no, that, that's what we think makes the most sense. And that's why, and I've actually, you know, teamed up with these two law firms because there's only a handful of litigants that do this type of work that have, one, you know, the financial resources to fund something so large against, you know, Big Pharma, and then actually have the experience in this type of litigation.
Okay.
So no, absolutely. And it would be, the way we do it, I'm just saying, is that it would be a kind of, the more you get, the less of the contingency. And so, anyway, people, people do things differently, that's, you know.
And, yeah, thank you for that. And the other thing, I'm guessing that, well, first of all, getting back to that, you have provided, I'm guessing, or will provide to the city attorney, rather, examples?
Of the fee contract?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And finally, I think that any kind of legislation, someone mentioned that the Burnley County might have provided legislation, but I think that we'd probably be preempted from actually legislating in this area regarding medicine, right? The city of Albuquerque probably can't.
I'm sorry, I don't know that I understand your question.
The city of Albuquerque, in terms of our legislative power...
Oh, yes.
...to like getting involved in issues of what kind of medication should or shouldn't be prescribed, I'm guessing that we can't go near that, both in state and federal, are probably preempted.
Because it's a controlled substance, that would fall under the Controlled Substances Act. So, I mean, there may be some things that the city could do, but if I'm understanding your question correctly, probably not. Now, there, the pharmacy board, for example, the state pharmacy board is doing things, it's my understanding, to try to help identify abuses, which is what, you know, those distributors should have been doing all this time. And so, I think there's more, and I don't know, again, that this is what the city does, but, you know, there's things that they can do that, you know, where more red flags will come up if there seems to be an increase in prescription rate, for example, compared to a population rate, you know, that kind of thing. Suspicious use. So I think our, the pharmacy board is trying to, you know, better do things, but it's not something that I believe the city has the power to do.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought.
Councillor Penya.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I'll just end it with just saying again, thank you for being here. And to ask you, if you could actually just put up the one slide that you have, the Oxycodeine consumption in 2015. And the only reason I say that is just because if you look at this, when you put it up earlier, obviously, you didn't have time to do the entire presentation. It's really, I think it's really a powerful presentation in terms of what's happening in our community today. But if you can't, it's okay. I'm sorry, you already closed it up. I just wanted to say that, you know, you looked at it, when you glanced through it a minute ago, it showed, you know, it has Canada, Germany, Australia, and if you look at the United States, it's just off the charts in terms of consumption. So I don't know what the answer is, but I think this is a good attempt at trying to address it. So thank you, I appreciate you being here.
You're very welcome. And I think she's...
That's fine, I think we've...
You think you've got it?
We think we've got it, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're so welcome.
Thank you so much for your time.
Appreciate your time and your presentation.
Yeah, appreciate allowing the presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's go back to Lurley Noe and the Sunshine ambassadors. I think they are all here now.
I'm going to go ahead and talk while, while we get our dancers set up. And I wanted to introduce the Sunshine ambassadors. We are a dance program for children and adults with disabilities. We are 501(c)(3) that was started over 12 years ago in the state of Tennessee. And then the Great Recession hit, our family had to move, and we ended up here. So we have brought sunshine, more sunshine here to this wonderful Sunshine State. And our mission in this program is to enrich the lives of children and adults with disabilities, as well as to advocate for those that have disabilities. We do this through weekly classes and public performances such as this, so that you can see that people with disabilities often have more abilities than you give them credit to initially. And so, our whole idea is to emphasize progression for the individual, not perfection. And so, some of our dancers need a little help, so we have some, we have peer dancers that dance with us, as well as using adult volunteers and teen volunteers as well. We just started our second class in Albuquerque, which is going to be at the St. Jude Thaddeus Catholic Church on the west side. And so, and this class is at the, let's see, it's at 3805 Academy Parkway with Dance Theater Southwest. So, if you need more information, we do have flyers that are located out at the table, and I believe that all the council members have received a flyer as well about our program. We're very proud of our program. We have reached and affected the lives of many, many people, including some that have actually been in film and other dance programs as well. I'm going to stop talking and let you see one of our, one of our dances and just ring in the holiday season with a little bit of Jingle Bell Rock. So just bear with me as I get the music going.
Hi, everybody. This is Kevin Seville with my chipmunk pals inviting you to get aboard the Christmas bandwagon, and here we go. Jingle bell, jingle bell, jingle bell rock. Jingle bells swing and jingle bells ring. Sailing and blowing up, push us up high. Now the jingle up, how we run. Jingle bell, jingle bell, jingle bell rock. Jingle bells chime in, jingle bells ring. Let's make a play, jingle bells ring. In the first day, what a bright time is the right time to run the night away. Jingle bell time is the swell time. Little brighten in a one-horse race. A biddy and a jingle horse pick up your feet. Jingle around the farm. Mix and mingle in a jingle and dee. That's the jingle bell rock. What a bright time is the right time to run the night away. Jingle bell time is the swell time. Little brighten in a one-horse race. A biddy and a jingle horse pick up your feet. Jingle around the farm. Mix and mingle in a jingle and dee. That's the jingle bell, that's the jingle bell, that's the jingle bell.
Let's go ahead and go on to the next item. It will be presentation from Gerald Romero, the Budget Officer, regarding the latest GRT projections and report. Welcome, Mr. Romero.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm Gerald Romero, Budget Officer for the city. On December 15th, Friday, we received our October distribution. This is October activity that is accrued for November, so I apologize. So this would include the balloon fiesta. So we, the year-over-year, so this would be November compared to November a year ago, we're up 17.7%. As we expected, if you'll recall, we were down substantially, looking at October of '17 compared to October one year before that, because of a very anomalous distribution, and then a correction made a year ago. So we're trending right now at .9%. Once again, our original budget estimate for grocery receipts tax distribution growth was 3%. And right now, in our five-year forecast, which is on the letter of introduction, we're looking at revising that 3% projection down to 1.7. So it's positive. It's not bad news, but we certainly could be growing at a higher rate. Construction seemed to be driving by far the largest source of growth for the month for November. I stand for questions.
Are there any questions? Counselor Harris?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Romero. And just to clarify something, I talked to a member of the executive staff over here, and some people have wondered about what appeared, if you read the Journal article a certain way today, that the mayor was going to be doing some sort of presentation about the budget and the forecast. But I understand that really what the mayor meant is that he's just going to be answering questions. So there were some people who came here today wanting that presentation about the budget and the forecast, but I guess that's not really forthcoming at this point. Is that correct?
Mr. President and Counselor Harris, I was not expecting to make a presentation on the five-year forecast, since it was just on the letter of introduction. I'm happy to do that at Finance and Government Operation Committee's first meeting of January, if you'd like, or make a full presentation to the council sometime in January. But I was not prepared to do that tonight.
Yeah, I understand. I just wanted to clarify for people who might be watching, wondering, because I was actually wondering if that was going to happen today, and was watching the ABQ Journal, and wondering to see what he had to say. But I guess they're just answering questions. I just wanted that clarification. Thanks. Just worked that out with the president. Thanks.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Romero? See, Counselor Gibson, Counselor Davis.
Santa Claus.
Doom and gloom, I think.
Well, so that's what I want to ask you, because I'm still not clear. I'm sorry. So last month, that was, they reported back to us, what's that, 12, down 12%?
Correct.
Okay. And the latest one, for, again, this is from October 1 to October 31, or some major part of October. Then now we're up to 17%.
Correct.
Wow.
So, Mr. President and Counselor Gibson, remember, we're looking at growth rates for the same month a year ago. And in October of '16, we got a very large distribution that was a mistake. The state turned around and fixed it in November of '16. So you had a huge fluctuation up, and then a huge fluctuation down from October to November of '16. So even though we're looking at more normal trends now, you're looking at those very odd bases one year ago. So
Yeah.
it looks like a very large negative number last month, and then a large positive number this month, when really, the trend is what matters now.
So that's the year-over-year for the month?
Correct. We do that because there's seasonality. If we looked at October compared to the next following month, November, you've got things like, you know, retail sales, you've got the balloon fiesta. We try to sort of wash that out and look at the seasonality by comparing October to October a year ago.
Okay. So so far, from July 1st to, well, at least beginning of November, our growth is at just a little, little under 1%, and we're working on 3% for the year.
Counselor Sanchez and Counselor Gibson, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Counselor Davis.
Very briefly, Ms. Romero, thank you. In the mayor's press conference earlier today, I think we went through the numbers a little bit. But essentially, what this means for us, if we stay on this projection for the rest of the year, is we have about a $5.6 million, sort of, maybe, I hate this word, but a structural deficit in our budget. But if I recall, we entered the year with a little bigger expectation for that, and some of the austerity measures, and delaying some hiring, and also just some delayed onboarding for programs has helped us keep on track. And I think I heard the mayor say, and our new CFO say, we can absorb a 5.6. We dealt with a $10 million last year. We're on track and doing okay in that regard, in terms of not, at this point, the Budget Office hasn't made any recommendations for any structural changes to the budget. Is that correct, for this year?
Mr. President and Counselor Davis, yes. And right now, it's mostly driven by the revenue. It is driven by the revenue loss, right? So we ended '17 with revenues a little lower than expected, but because of some of the austerity measures we put in place about January of last year, we didn't spend all of the department's appropriations. So we carry forward a little bit more to help us out. That said, if departments fully spend their budgets this year that they were appropriated, we still have about a $5.9 million revenue shortfall that we need to deal with. We know about it well enough in advance. It's not insurmountable.
Thank you, sir.
I thank you. I have one question, Mr. Romero, and my question is in regards to a letter that was sent over a year ago by Counselor Benton in reference to the distribution of the grocery receipts taxes and the methodology that was being utilized. Have we gotten word back from Tax and Rev regarding that issue?
Mr. President, I'm looking at the City Economist, and he's nodding his head no.
I think we need to probably follow up as quickly as possible, and we need a response back from the state regarding that issue.
Mr. President, I'll work with council staff to follow up on that.
Counselor Benton.
Thanks for bringing that up, Mr. President. Mr. Romero, you mentioned the department's spending, you know, the scenario is that they're going to spend their budget. In very rough numbers and across the board, do you know how, what the average in reversions has been over the last, you know, two or three years?
Mr. President and Counselor Benton, I would say about 2% of the overall general fund appropriation would be an average anywhere between eight and 12 million over the last three years, per year.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Benton. Let's go and move on to item number four, Economic Development Discussions. There is none this evening. We are now under item five, Administrative Question and Answers. Are there any questions for the administration? Counselor Davis.
I promise I don't have something for everything on the agenda tonight. Thanks and for the administration, I think, Mr. Real. But we heard last week from the mayor at one of his presentations, that the new administration was looking through the budget. They were taking a look, obviously, at ART funding, and maybe had identified some questions about how that was coming together. Again, I saw some things in the paper. But I think, as we've had a chance to look through those more, I think we know that there are some pieces there, that, like the $1 million broadband that's covered, but included there, that's above and beyond some of it, some of the Water Authority expenditures that the Water Authority was out loud about early, about doing, say, 10 years of preventive maintenance or preventive replacement ahead of, that's included in there. But Ms. Nayer or Mr. Real, could you give us an update sort of on what we see there? Obviously, we're still waiting on Congress, if that ever happens, to pass a budget, to finish the, to make the grant available agreement. But what is the administration's understanding now of our current ART budget and obligations there? I think it's not as big as it might have seemed, as the old administration might have been going out the door.
Well, Mr. President and Counselor, let me just describe to you that, at this point, we were doing a very broad overview of that project in particular. I will tell you that in meeting with the staff, we have begun to drill down on some of the expenditures on some of the programs. For example, the issue associated with the infrastructure improvements that were done as part of the art project, we did receive additional funding through the transportation programs, through the Council of Governments, for improvements, for example, to the interchange of Lomas and Central. That was a project that needed to be done by the city, but was not necessarily part of art, but because art was being constructed, it was rolled into that project. So it made it look like the project was a lot more expensive, right? We've done some additional work, as you said, the broadband, some of the work along the sidewalks, improvements, lighting, et cetera. A lot of those projects that were added on. So the entire budget for, if you will, that I think people had talked about was about $135 million roughly for the art project. But when you drill down and you take some of those additional, additional work that actually was done, and I would say probably done correctly in the sense that it was a construction project that needed to get done, and so we took advantage of that opportunity. The actual art piece of it is the piece that's of interest, in that it's about $119 million
Yes, sir.
for the art program itself. Now, we know that, that we are, at least, our understanding at this point is that the Federal Transit Administration has agreed to reimburse the city up to $75 million for that program. The challenge is basically a bit of the unpredictability that's happening in Washington as we speak with the budget issues, but also the fact that we do not have, at this point, a signed agreement with the Federal Transit Administration on the actual reimbursement of funds to the city of Albuquerque. Now, it's my understanding, again, from visiting with staff, that they have almost guaranteed that that money would be available once it's appropriated by Congress, and that we would be getting that money in two trunks, basically, in the current year budget, once that's approved. There's about $50 million in that budget, and then the following year, another $25 million, which would give us the 75 that has been committed. The challenge is, is just, the fact is that the city up fronted all of the costs and all the expenses for that program, as is required through the process, because it's on a reimbursement basis. So now we're, in fact, going to meet with the Federal Transit Administration here in the next month in Dallas to begin to formally put that agreement together, and to get, to ensure that we have an agreement to get those funds reimbursed to the city. And then again, we'll just wait on what happens in Washington with the Congress and the president as it relates to the budget. So that gives you a bit of a flavor for that. And as we've said, and the mayor said at the press conference, our interest is in making sure that the city's money that was put out for the project is reimbursed, because it does impact the budget. It's money that was swept across the board from all the programs to make the project work. And now we just, our goal is to make sure we get reimbursed, and that we then go and make sure that the project works to the best of our ability.
Mr. President and Mr. Real, thank you very much for that. That's a great summary and a great place to pick up. And I just wanted to reiterate from what we understood and to respond to some of the public questions that we had gotten, to remind folks, I think ART project is still under contract for the, by Hannah Houston, the general contractor or the major contractor there, but is a guaranteed max price. So there's a guarantee in there. That hasn't changed, according to the rules, but it is a product of all those other things that were done along the side. And I wanted to just clarify that piece. It's really important, and I appreciate that. And thanks for that update about, on the federal funding and the meeting piece. Let us know how we can be helpful. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the administration? Counselor Benton?
Thank you, Mr. Real, for that clarification. And, yeah, you know, before the ART project was funded by the federal government, as was stated, those of us who use the old intersection of Rio Grande and Rio Grande Central and Lomas, where all of that comes together, know that that's been a difficult area for commuters and for the neighborhoods over the years, and for transit as well, just the bottlenecks. So we're hopeful about that. But those were funds, just to reiterate, those were funds that were, that were identified and made part of the Transportation Infrastructure Program of the Council of Governments for sometime prior to the ART. They were utilized when the construction occurred. And then the other question I had, with regard to the broadband, do you know anything, Lawrence, about how that, how are people going to be plugging into that or benefiting from that?
Mr. President and Counselor Benton, to be candid, I have not gotten that briefing yet. That is one of my topic areas for tomorrow. So I would certainly be happy to give you more detail as soon as I get briefed on that.
That is something that constituents have asked about, knowing that we're going to have fiber optic, much higher speed, potentially, internet all up and down that corridor. So yeah, I'd be interested in seeing what you come up with.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Let's go and move on to the Journal. Counselor, Vice President Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move approval of the December 4th Journal.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the December 4th Journal. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed? That carries unanimously. We are now under item seven, Communications and Introductions. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing EC5 on tonight's agenda for final action. EC5 is the mayor's recommendation of award to Intera Inc. Corporation for the operation and maintenance of Los Angeles landfill, and this requires two-thirds votes. Do we have a second? We have a motion and three seconds. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed? That carries unanimously. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing EC6 on tonight's agenda for final action. EC6 is the mayor's recommendation of the award of RBC Capital for debt obligation bonds and swaps, and this requires two-thirds votes. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed? That carries unanimously. And I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing EC7 on tonight's agenda for final action. EC7 is the Panorama Boulevard vacation. Isaacson and Afrim and Servtech, Inc., agents for Mecon buyer construction, request vacation of the public right-of-way for Old Panorama Boulevard tracks N2, N3A, Tanauan Priorities and Tracks 18, High Desert Zoned RD, located on the west side of Tranway Boulevard Northeast, between Academy Road Northeast and San Antonio Drive Northeast, containing approximately 24 acres. Move a due pass?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed? That carries unanimously. Counselor Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move approval of the letter of introduction.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the letter of introductions. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed? That carries unanimously. We are now under item eight, Reports and Committees. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Government Operations Committee met on Monday, December 11, and reports out the following items. In the matter of ECs 478 and 479, that they be approved. In the matter of R249, 261, and 262, that they be without recommendation. And in the matter of R260, that it do pass and be acted on at the meeting at which it is reported. I make a motion to accept this report.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Jones. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed? That carries unanimously. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee met on Wednesday, December 13, 2017, and reports out the following items. In the matter of EC 486, 492, 494, and 496, that they be confirmed and be acted on at the meeting at which they are reported. In the matter of EC 495, that it be confirmed. Mr. President, I make a motion to accept the committee reports.
We have a motion and a second to accept the committee reports. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed? That carries unanimously. We are now under deferrals and withdrawals. Counselors, are there any withdrawals at this time? Counselor Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. In the matter of O-45, amending chapters one and two, ROA, et cetera, I move a deferral until February 21.
We have a motion and a second to defer O-45 until February 21. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed? That carries unanimously. Next, Counselor Winter, O-55.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is O-55 prohibiting elected officials of departments, boards, commissions, advisory groups of the city of Albuquerque from organizing, sponsoring, advertising, or hosting political forums. I move deferral until January 17.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Benton to defer item O-55 until January the 17. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed? That carries unanimously. That carries unanimously. Counselor Penya?
I'll substitute O-145. Thank you, Mr. President. O-145 is directing the administration to install four-way stop signs at the intersections of Batan Drive, Gonzalez Road Southwest, and Camino Samartheen, and 86th Street. Directing the administration to study 98th Street Southwest and Amola Mesa Drive Southwest. Making appropriation, I move to withdraw.
We have a motion and a second to withdraw. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed? That carries unanimously. We are now under the consent agenda. I move approval of the consent agenda. And I'd like to, Counselor Benton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I'd like to pull Item C from the agenda. That's EC 17439, Solid Waste Management Department, Air Quality Impacts of Compressed Natural Gas in Lieu of Diesel Fuel.
And I also would like to pull Item G, EC 459.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move with those changes, approval of the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda, excluding those two items. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed? That carries unanimously. Counselor Benton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, if someone from Solid Waste could come down, Mr. Salde, or whoever's here from Solid Waste, I'd like to ask about the, this objective report.
Mr. Salde, welcome.
Good evening, sir. Good Mr. President. Mr. Salde, appreciate the work on this report. You know, this issue of our fuels for heavy vehicles is something I've been interested in a long time, but primarily at transit and solid waste. But I did note in the report that there are some potential savings to be achieved through a conversion, at least of part of the fleet, I suppose, not necessarily all of them, of the heavy vehicles, to change over to natural gas, even with the costs of putting in the infrastructure to fuel the vehicles. There's significant savings to be achieved. But I did want to ask about some of the comments in there that referred to the waste transfer facility and its location vis-à-vis, I suppose it would be the regular delivery trucks. We're not talking necessarily about the heavy trucks that would be transferring waste, but our regular waste collection vehicles. This would not work because of the technology and the distances involved. Could you just comment on that briefly? I just wanted to understand that.
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, I want to be sure I heard the entire question. What you're asking me is whether or not it makes sense with direct haul for collection vehicles to convert to compressed natural gas.
Well, I guess my question is, were we not to implement the waste transfer facility? My understanding from the report, or maybe it was just from the staff write-up, but from what I read, was that vehicles in the far east side of the city, it would not work for them to be on natural gas, even though it's cleaner for the neighborhood air and so forth, and more economical to the city. But if they were to be traveling from the east side of the city all the way to Cerro, Colorado, as they do today, that they could not, it would not work in terms of their, I guess, just the capacity of those vehicles to run those distances.
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, it's actually a range issue. It's a matter of how many diesel gallon equivalents we can fit on the collection vehicles. And it varies by the vehicle type. A front load is a little bit different than an ASL or a side load type truck, and it's a matter of how many containers we can fit on the truck. We should be able to get close to 100 to 120 diesel miles, as far as range goes, which would make it viable throughout the entire city. The issue is, when you complicate it with weather or additional traffic, whether or not we'd have enough spare capacity to be able to convert the whole fleet without having logistical issues associated with it. The report also recognized the fact that it's a three-legged stool. You have to have the fueling infrastructure in place. You have to have the maintenance facility in place. That's why it references back to the transfer station, because that's one of the components of the proposed transfer station, is an updated maintenance facility capable of maintaining the natural gas vehicles. And then the third part of it is just the pure economics of buying the vehicles, paying the premium cost, and getting the return you're talking about. The report shows that when diesel fuel remains consistently above $2.50, it really comes down to the cost of the fuel for the return.
Okay. And the, I think there were two analyses, there are two parts of the report. One really had to do with what I would call local air quality, just in the neighborhood of the vehicles going through by passing your house, and the other was, as requested in the request for the objective report, was the global kind of greenhouse gas production. And my understanding from that was on the greenhouse gas, natural gas, you know, on the face of it looks pretty good, but then when you look for exploration and some of, at least the processes that are currently being used for exploration and drilling, it becomes less attractive, but not less attractive, it becomes more or less on par with diesel, whereas in a local environment of just a neighborhood, it's a cleaner emissions. Does that characterize it correctly?
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, it's a pretty good analogy.
All right.
From a CO standpoint, one is higher than the other. One's higher in NOx than the other.
Right.
When you balance it all out, they're pretty equal from an emissions standpoint. In the neighborhoods, based on the utilization, the natural gas for automated side loaders is cleaner.
Okay.
For local emissions.
And the proposed facility there did have a fueling, as part of the plan at least, a fueling station for natural gas, and the new maintenance facilities would be adequate for that, correct?
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, that's correct.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. President, can I follow briefly?
Yes, go ahead.
And Counselor Benton, I appreciate these questions. I think it's really important, Mr. Salde, thank you. And I just want to point out, if we move forward on this or wanted to revisit, since the budget objective was created, the company that's making our all-electric buses for ART is now marketing all-electric transfer units as well for sanitation. It addresses that methane issue that's on a bigger scale, and certainly a big issue for us here in the West and in New Mexico, and some that's on par, obviously, with that range being one of those questions that's being addressed. But it's an opportunity for us to look at that, particularly as we're building out our solar facilities for transit and others on the west side. It'd be an opportunity for us to take a new look at that and how that might be another option as well. So, thank you.
We've had one individual sign up for EC 439 to speak, and that is David Wood. Please come forward.
Merry Christmas, President Sanchez, Counselors. Briefly, what I want to say about the Integrated Waste Management project is really two things. First of all, it was submitted by the prior administration, and I'm not sure that the current administration has had the time to thoroughly review it.
They're requesting a deferral.
Yes, yeah. I just couldn't pull myself, so I just, so I'm up here anyway. Beyond that, I do want to point out that at the risk of getting the administration mad at me, there could be a pending announcement that would negate some significant portions of that Integrated Waste Management Plan. So I just wanted to point that out as well, and I hope I didn't get myself in trouble with the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Counselor Benton?
Just to clarify, the administration wanted to defer not this, but the other one?
Till both, both bills.
Oh, both of them?
Correct.
Okay. So I'll move a deferral on Item C, EC 17439.
Until January 17th. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Vice President Harris. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed? That carries unanimously. And I'd also like to move, I'd like to defer EC 459 until January the 17th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed? That carries unanimously. We are now under general public comments. There will be a two-minute time limit. The light on the podium will be green for the first minute and a half, then the bell will ring, and the light will turn yellow, indicating you have 30 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments. At the two-minute mark, the light will turn red. I'm going to call the first four speakers up. There is availability in the front for you to sit, so we can keep the process moving. The first speaker is Tom Dent, followed by Don Schrader, followed by Adrian Barboa, followed by Elizabeth Wagner. So once your name has been called, please come to the front. Thank you. Mr. Dent, go and proceed.
Hi. Good evening, Counselors. I am submitting a transcript on behalf of Pete DiNelli from his blog today in regards to the December 15th Albuquerque Journal article of sick leave ordinance proposed. Two city counselors seek fair policy after narrow defeat on the ballot initiative in October. I'm going to read some excerpts since there's not much time. The Sanchez-Harris proposed mandatory sick leave ordinance has some similarities, but is yet very different to the healthy workforce ordinance that failed in the October 3rd municipal election. The Sanchez-Harris proposed sick leave ordinance will not apply to businesses with fewer than 50 employees, and it will not apply to temporary workers. Unlike the ordinance voted down, the Sanchez-Harris ordinance leaves out the rebuttable presumption that any adverse action against an employee taken within 90 days of the employee being out sick is retaliation. Elizabeth Wagner, an attorney with the New Mexico Center on Law and Poverty, said the proposed ordinance, as written, would be the weakest sick leave bill in the country. For the last eight years, Sanchez and Harris, and for that matter, the entire city council have rubber-stamped, stamped all the former Republican, all that the former Republican mayor did, including the art bus project and the final adoption of the ABCZ comprehensive plan that will have a long-term impact on our neighborhoods and favors developers. When over 20,000 petition signatures were collected, petition signatures were collected last year for the mandatory sick leave ordinance, known as the healthy workforce ordinance, Sanchez and Harris were nowhere to be found in support of it. Both Sanchez and Harris--
Mr. Dent, thank you. Your time has expired.
All right. Thank you.
Don Schrader?
Can somebody take this? Thank you.
My parents might have been good friends had they never married. Marriage destroys many friendships. Some couples become better friends after divorce. If I had been my mother, I do not know how I could have coped being married to my dad. If I had been my dad, I do not know how I could have coped being married to my mother. Married 48 years until my mother died, much of the time, it was emotional war. I learned from them not to get trapped in a miserable marriage. I aim to tell the truth. I aim not to make foolish promises. Do I ever, do I ever know myself, or the other person, or the future, well enough to know for sure? We both will do well with only each other romantically until death. A solemn vow many make and break, or want to break. A solemn vow I refuse to make to anyone. I treasure being in love with certain men. Like many people, I am able to be deeply and openly in love with more than one person at the same time. Yes to passionate romance. Legal marriage, for me, never.
Please no applause, followed by Elizabeth Wagner. Welcome.
Hello. Good evening, Mr. President and members of the council. My name is Adrian Barboa. I am the field director at Strong Families New Mexico. Strong Families is a proud member of APD Forward, a community coalition made up of 17 organizations and several family members of affected by police violence. On December 14th, APD Forward sent a letter to all of you, city council, and your policy staff, so hopefully you received that, because we're concerned with the council's request for an audit of the federal independent monitor, Dr. James Ginger. APD Forward is here tonight to share our concerns with you in the request the city council repeal or amend the resolution. Our first concern is that the requested audit is procedurally incorrect. The CASA and the order governing the monitor's payment both contain dispute resolution procedures that involve notice to all parties and to the court. It is our understanding that no notice to the parties or to the court has occurred. Second, the scope of the request audit is overly broad. The contract to Dr. Ginger is a flat fee contract where each side bears risk regarding actual versus budgeted cost, and Dr. Ginger was the lowest bid amongst applicants for independent monitor. Under the CASA, the city may request records of expenses from the monitor, but only with the notice to the monitor and to the court. Again, it is our understanding that no notice has been provided to the parties or to the court. Finally, the issue of the monitor's performance is exclusively within the jurisdiction of the federal court. City council's resolution calls for a blanket review of the performance of the independent monitor, a subject which the CASA makes clear is reserved solely for the court. This separation of powers is critical to the integrity of the reform process and protects the process from outside political pressure. For these reasons, we respectfully ask the council to repeal Resolution 17252, or alternatively to narrow--
Ms. Barboa, your time has expired.
--the scope of the resolution to reflect the terms of the court-approved settlement agreement--
Thank you. Time has expired. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Next speaker, Elizabeth Wagner. Counselor Benton?
Not a question for the speaker, but perhaps for the sponsors of that bill. What about this notification question, a notification of the court? Do we know what's required and whether we've done it?
I'm not sure if there's a notification in court. Obviously, the court was notified because the judge brought it up, I guess, in a hearing. And I don't think, based on what this woman said, there's any approval by the court. I think we just have to notify people, and there was lots of notifications.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Wagner, go and proceed.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the council. My name is Elizabeth Wagner. I'm an attorney with the New Mexico Center on Law and Poverty. We support efforts to pass an earned sick leave ordinance in the city of Albuquerque so that no working family has to choose between earning a paycheck and taking care of a sick child. The media has reported that an earned sick leave ordinance will be introduced tonight by Counselors Sanchez and Harris, which unfortunately will not help the families who have to make that choice. I'm very familiar with sick leave legislation around the country. 28 other cities and nine states have passed sick leave ordinances, and if passed, this truly would be the worst sick leave legislation in the country. It excludes many part-time workers, most of whom want full-time jobs or work multiple jobs to make ends meet. It excludes between 90 to 95 percent of Albuquerque businesses from coverage altogether, and it denies coverage for many important family caregiving relationships. So if your mother or your grandmother falls and breaks her hip, you can't take sick time under this ordinance to care for her. Nieces, siblings, grandchildren, domestic partners, and many other important family caregiving relationships aren't covered by this draft ordinance. And lastly, if you are lucky enough to be covered, this law has the lowest sick time accrual rate in the country and the longest wait period, one of the longest wait periods to be able to actually use sick leave. So, for example, an employee working 20 hours a week would have to wait 34 weeks in order to be able to use leave. Better models are out there. Albuquerque families deserve something better than last place. We really hope you-- We really hope you will use my organization, use me as a resource to develop a better sick time policy, and that you'll consider the needs of working families who would be excluded by this legislation as you work to make improvements to this law. Happy to answer any questions, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Next speaker is Brenda McKenna, followed by C.C. Riley, followed by Elizabeth DaCary, followed by Colleen Gorman. And again, once your name has been called, please come forward. Go and proceed. Welcome.
Good evening, President and council members. I do have handouts for all the city councilors. President, can I hand them?
Give them to staff and they'll get them to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. An Albuquerque firearms dealer is sponsoring a coyote killing contest later this month. Prizes for slaughtering the smallest, the biggest are belts, belt buckles, that is, and firearms. I have reviewed city ordinance 9242, which is in the packet I've given to you, given that it's in the envelope there. And there's no exception for a killing contest. Moreover, the organizer has asked the participants to bring the carcasses to his storefront, which is in city limits. I think the city should be concerned about this. This sadly is not rare in New Mexico or in the United States. It happens in quite a few states. There has been bills proposed at the state legislature that have not been successful, but most recently, we were able to pass at the Senate chamber. A resolution from this city council supporting the ban of these events would help to support a statewide ban. I respectfully request this body support such a resolution and bring an end to this wanton slaughter of wildlife. Thank you.
Counselor Bennett.
So you stated, and appears from this language, that the existing city ordinance already prohibits this activity.
Well, it doesn't specifically say a coyote killing contest.
Right.
However, it does say that the only exceptions to killing an animal would be humane euthanasia, killing a bird for food, killing a rabbit for food, killing mice or rats. It doesn't say anything about a killing contest for prizes.
Right. So as far as I know, discharging a weapon, at least a firearm, in the city for something like this would be illegal anyway, right?
That's my understanding.
But the issue is that the fact that the sponsor of this, the shop that is sponsoring it, is doing business within the city of Albuquerque?
Yes, and it's not clear where the participants will discharge firearms.
Right.
It could be within the city, and it's my understanding that would be a misdemeanor only if it's witnessed by a deputy. Or they could be going right outside the city and using the electronic callers to bring in the coyotes, and then they're killed.
Yeah. I appreciate your bringing this to my attention. And I would just ask that the administration, through the Animal Welfare Department, check and see whether any sort of enforcement can be made against the sponsor of this contest.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I guess this is a, I don't know why they do this. What do you think the purpose is for these gun shops to do this? And I know that you had mentioned that they're going to bring all the carcasses back into the city at his shop. And I did see a couple pictures of truckloads of carcasses. What, and then what do they do with the carcasses? I just don't understand what the reasoning is for this.
I'm not sure, and I haven't talked to the sponsor of this particular contest. But I do know that coyote fur is sold to manufacturers of clothing. He may have those plans. But then, my concern is, what happens to the entrails? Where is he going to propose to dump that, or if he is going to dump it? And unfortunately, the coyote doesn't have any protection whatsoever in the state.
Counselor Davis.
Very briefly, Mr. President, I think we all agree. I see where this is going. This could take a minute, but I think there's some environmental health questions there. There may be some issues around ordinances. And so maybe we could ask Ms. Haltz or someone from the administration to outline a letter that we could, we've done this before, on people, whether it's a special event or anything else, whether it's city-approved or sanctioned or not, to just outline some of the concerns and city ordinances that might impact this. Obviously, we can't regulate if somebody goes to Torrance County and shoots an animal and brings it here, but there may be some other impacts that need to be looked at and addressed by the sponsor ahead of time. And given how quick and timely this is, perhaps we could hopefully do that fairly quickly, whether it's environmental health, you know, outlining our public safety regulations and others that might be helpful in determining how best they could either decide to do this or withdraw it and do something different.
President, Counselor Davis, the city legal department would be happy to look into any ordinance as it do some research.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McKenna.
Thank you, President.
Our next speaker is C.C. Riley, followed by Elizabeth DaCary.
Good evening, Larry and Pat. My name is C.C. Riley. I won't go to great length with my credentials right now. Suffice it to say, I'm a sovereignty risk analyst. I did that on Wall Street. I was a member of New York Society's security analyst. I was interviewed on Moneyline Show, and I have worked also in Europe for the European Union. In downtown Albuquerque now with the economic development, which I expect to be called under item four. I live there, south of Central and east of 10th Street, which is supposed to be fair game for what at this point was told to me to be using eminent domain with, including large percentages of Section 8 housing in any edifices that would be built in that area, as they have started doing already. There's a building on 10th and Central that started out looking very good and now has homeless people sleeping in the corridors. And in addition to drug sellers and drug users being in the building and the rental agent being, refusing to do anything about it. Well, back in New York, and just quickly, I'm going to say that the biggest problems with low-income housing in New York, in drug hubs, are gangs, drug dealers, whores, and people with HIV/AIDS. There is no law here that makes people who are infected with HIV/AIDS make it clear to--
Ma'am, thank you very much.
--people they want to have sex with--
Thank you.
--and announce it before they have the sex.
Next speaker, Elizabeth DaCary, followed by Colleen Gorman, followed by Salvador Barros, followed by Barbara Grothas.
Good evening, Mr. President, and good evening, councilors. My name is Elizabeth DeSherry. And though I live in Valencia County, I volunteer routinely here in Albuquerque, and I'm a retired emergency room nurse, having worked at a major hospital here. And I am speaking in opposition to coyote killing contests. The contest will be held on December 30th and 31st. That is a holiday weekend. And as somebody who has personally seen the carcasses of the coyotes that are discarded in different areas, I found the carcass of a coyote with a block in its mouth under a Royal Bridge near a city. I am very concerned that a business in Albuquerque has decided to sponsor a contest. These contests are a race to kill coyotes for a prize, and the prizes are usually typically firearms or cash. The contests are likely, they're going to be in Albuquerque organizing this contest, but they will be likely shooting in areas outside of Albuquerque, including counties within a 50 to 75-mile range of Albuquerque, including my county. As you heard, coyotes, there is basically no restrictions on killing coyotes. They can be taken by any means, no bag limits, no defined season. We have at least 30 coyote killing contests a year in New Mexico, with some of these contests organized right here in the Middle Rio Grande Valley. And I just want to say that they contribute to a negative image of our state. The killing contests are counterproductive to land management practices, and they are a public health and safety risk. Thank you very much.
Ms. DeSherry, thank you very much. Next speaker, Colleen Gorman, followed by Salvador Barros. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. President and city council. Thank you for, my name's Colleen Gorman. I am Navajo. I'm a high school social studies teacher. I'm an artist. I recently completed a mural for the city called Women in New Mexico. I'm a member of the Angry Brown Poets and a former member of the Albuquerque Slam team that we represented at National Poetry Slam. I'm here today because, as board president of quote-unquote Incorporated, which is a 501(c)(3), it's core, I am here because I am a supporter of its core values, which is freedom of speech, democracy, media education and literacy through training, production, and programming opportunities. As a grassroots startup, the original goal was to develop community TV where regular people could learn how to create their own TV programs for broadcast in New Mexico and beyond. As a national leader, we advocated for the Community Cable Act of 1984 by Congress that required all cable companies to allocate funding to pub, pick channels, public education and government access channels so that, because they make profit on public rights away. As a Native American and as a woman, as a supporter of freedom of speech and platforms for democracy where public forums allow for community to arrive at solutions, I am asking city council to immediately end U-Public's contract to operate Public Access Channel 27, not to extend it for a month or six months, because we have documented that they have embezzled public funds for private gain. And despite an April 2016 letter of concern and two letters of noncompliance since then, they continue to disallow public access to pub, public access to public access. And censorship and playing commercial content on non-commercial channels. Before Mayor Berry had the city break in through the roof of our facilities and stationed armed guards to not allow employees to do our jobs, we were fifth in the nation with new and local programming. We supported people with disabilities to program and produce content. We have Native Americans--
Ms. Gorman, your time has expired. I apologize. Thank you.
--Muslims and Democracy Now! So, please, in support of democracy and platforms democracy, end U-Public's contract and put RFP out there for someone else.
Next speaker, Salvador Barros, followed by Barbara Grothas, followed by Todd Kirsting.
This is Salvador Barros, and he wanted to say something. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Grothas, Todd Kirsting, and Janet Sayers, welcome.
Good evening, President Sanchez and city councilors. We worked hard for you, Cynthia. And we've elected a majority of Democrats to the city council. At your last meeting, the Westside councilors appear to have joined a, in collusion with conservative members of our city council against the wishes of the people. I believe, Mr. Sanchez, you campaigned as a true Democrat when you ran. And I'm wondering, what does that mean, to be a true Democrat? Does that mean you're going to continue to collude with people and put our budget in the hands of people who clearly left our city in dire straits through poor decision-making and the expenditure of dollars? The collusion against the DOJ has cost us an enormous amount of money, and now you people are trying to blame the monitor for this. We've already heard testimony about that tonight. We are here to let you know, we are watching you now. If you don't want to support the voters who voted you into office, we are paying attention, and we are going to hold you accountable. So I hope you will keep this in mind, Ms. Penya, Mr. Sanchez, and Ms. Borrego. We do not want Santalina. We campaigned against it. Your citizens don't want it on the West Side. You talk to them. They don't want the traffic, they don't want the congestion, and we don't want sprawl. That water belongs to all of us. Thank you for your time. We're watching.
Todd Kirsting, followed by Janet Sayers, followed by Ted Namensky.
Thank you, President Sanchez, councilors. It was, my name is Todd Kirsting. I enjoy helping people and communities grow through the game of golf. And I think back to 1989, when I approached Dan Durand, who was a director of Parks and Rec, and I'll never forget him saying, you know, "Are you crazy?" And it was when I presented to him an idea to bring communities together at a Royal de los Soo Golf Course on Christmas Eve. And it started off as luminarias. And the first year, we had three hot air balloons. And I'm fortunate to say now, after I presented Mr. Durand with this presentation of a vision of bringing people together, he got it. And I'm happy to say, this Sunday night, I welcome everybody again, as well as the 30 hot air balloons now that will be displayed at 4:45 to 7:00 at Royal de los Soo Golf Course. And it stays in align with, actually, the book that Counselor Gibson brought up. It's a great book, Dreamland. And that's what we're trying to create as well through some golf clinics that I will be starting in January at Port de del Sol Golf Course at High Noon. So I'll give you and your staff more information as that time nears. But having said that, I just want to thank also the other Parks and Rec directors through the years and my boss for allowing us to continue this tradition. So thank you very much, and if anybody has any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you. Janet Sayers? Welcome back, Janet.
It has been a while. Well, good evening, Mr. President and members of the council. And I just wanted to comment on a few projects. First of all is to thank the council staff, and in particular, I believe Sandy Chavis, who coordinated the December 1 swearing-in. I've gone to a lot of them, and I think it was probably one of the best. I appreciated the fact that the PA system was great and that even if you were at the very back of the room, you could hear and see and participated. And I really appreciated the string quartet and the vocalist. I think my days of rock and roll dancing after swearing-ins are finished. But anyway, it was a lovely event, and I saw people of all ages, ethnic groups. It was a very community event. The next thing I wanted to mention is, I'm the president of the Del Nordy High School Alumni Association, of which Counselor Gibson represents quite a bit of our attendance area, along with Counselor Winter. And the good news is, we've given $28,000 of scholarships over the last five years, and we're on target to raise five, oh, excuse me, to give $10,000 in scholarships this year. And I just wanted to say that because it's, I mean, a lot is going on in the community, private sector donations, people, alumni wanting to give back. So I, it's just a happy thing. Next is my Albuquerque Historical Society. Every Saturday morning at 10 o'clock, we do a free walking tour of downtown Central. We start at First and Central, talk about the coming of the railroad and then historical buildings. There's 11 of us who are tour guides. It's free. We give our time. And I, we had over 400 participants on 40 different Saturdays. This la, is that the end? Am I over?
That's the end.
Do I have 30 seconds? Anyway--
Counselor Gibson.
So we just want to, we're happy to donate our time and get people to understand about downtown.
Counselor Gibson?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Not really a question, just--
Not really a question, just would like to thank you, you know, for doing the tours, for one thing, but also for everything that you do to help school kids, Del Norte, the schools that feed into them. And you're on Open Space?
I've served on the Open Space Advisory Board and...
Are you there now?
I was term limited out.
Oh, okay.
So, that's fine.
But I know you've done a lot for the city of Albuquerque, and I really want to thank you for that, particularly your work for the schools.
Happy to do it.
So, and good luck with the fundraising. Good cause.
Counselor Borrego?
Thank you, Janet Sayers, and thank you fellow AMAFCA Board Member. Janet also served on the AMAFCA, and she's done a lot of things in a very positive spirit for the city, including running for office. And Janet, you and I worked together for many years, and I'm really happy to see you. Thank you.
And in closing, and just thank you all for the time, energy, the sacrifice you make to serve on the City Council and be here hundreds of hours, thousands, I don't know what.
Counselor Benton?
So, just to reiterate, Saturday mornings, 10:00 a.m., right?
Yes, although we're on our holiday break.
Okay.
We come back on...
Don't come during the holiday.
Saturday, January the 6th, and all of the information is on our Albuquerque Historical Society website.
10:00 a.m. though, First and Central.
10:00 a.m., we'll be there, rain, snow, wind. And if nobody shows up, we go home. But we... We're there.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Tad Neminsky, followed by Treshawn Buffen, followed by Paul Ryan McKinney.
Thank... Excuse me. Thank you. My name is Tad Neminsky. Well, nineteen million so far in interest for art projects. What about next two, three, five years? How many millions additional in interest? Now, okay, now let's go back to Central Avenue, Fifth Street, Zuni Copper. What do they have in common? One way each direction. Well, what really got me? Right here between San Mateo, Copper between San Mateo and San Pedro, one way including down the driving lane, bicycle lane. Well, let's go here on the Fifth Street in downtown, next south from here, south by library. They put right on the middle of one half parking spaces. And bicycle next to the... And next one, if you want to make it, only one lane going south. If you want to make it, turn left or right, you blocking every whole traffic. That is smart idea. Who's the idiot designer? Idiot designer approved. I'm sick and tired of this kind of work. People also fed up in Albuquerque drivers. Well, you also in... Also endangering drivers when you put bicycle together. Well, every bicycle should be licensed, insured, bonded and registered. Let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Treshawn Buffen. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President and Council Members. My name is Treshawn Buffen, and I'm a resident and taxpayer of the city of Albuquerque, as well as a member of Olay. I'm also a full-time student studying engineering at CNM and a part-time worker averaging about fifteen hours a week. The sick leave ordinance that will be proposed tonight will leave me without the ability to earn paid sick time off. Excuse me. And due to my commitments to school, I don't have the luxury to work full-time hours. And there are a lot of people out there, like many of my friends, that have either personal or health circumstances that are keeping them from being able to work those full-time hours. And like the people that are covered with the proposed ordinance, we too get sick, and we all deserve the right to be able to earn the time off, to be able to take care of ourselves and loved ones when we're not feeling well. To the sponsors of this ordinance, at your earliest convenience, I am more than happy to sit down and talk with you guys about the realities of Albuquerque workers. Let's work together to build a paid sick leave policy that not only benefits businesses, but Albuquerque workers and the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Ryan McKinney, followed by Simon Polakowski, followed by...
Thank you, President Sanchez. And I guess congratulations are in order for President Sanchez, Vice President Harris, my favorite bipartisan duo. We have a Republican that supports sick leave, mandatory government enforced sick leave, and a Democrat who supports corporate welfare. So, we get best of both worlds. But what I really wanted to talk about was RA 14-1. President Sanchez, I don't know if you remember RA 14-1, but you introduced that back when you were President, 2014 crackdown on free speech. Now, we have some folks in the audience tonight with little index cards with eyes on them. Can you guys hold those up for me, please? Now, political ideology speaking...
Please address the Council, and no index cards, please.
Thank you. That's what I was getting at. Political ideology aside, we disagree probably almost 100%. Me, them, you know, I want to be clear, you know, libertarian individual, definitely not a member of the Democratic Party. But man, I'd like... Love to be able to see them in the back with a huge banner, a huge banner, reminding you guys that, yeah, they're watching. They put a lot of work in to get six Democrats... Well, I guess not all six last time, but get four Democrats elected last election, and you guys are ignoring them. I mean, the sick leave bill or ordinance is the perfect example. Nobody likes it. Actual liberty-minded folks and conservatives don't like it. Progressives don't like it. Nobody likes it. Your corporate buddies are the only ones that like it. You know, I was at a Sandoval County meeting recently where they were talking about a real hot-button issue of right to work. Folks had banners. Folks applauded. Nothing happened. It was okay. You know, we could bring free speech back here. And I would like to thank you for not slamming the gavel down when we applauded the young ladies that were sharing their talent with us. So, thank you for having some consideration.
Next speaker is Simon Polakowski, followed by Chris Bregman, followed by Diane McCash. And if your name has been called, please come to the front and be prepared to speak.
Council President, Council. First, I think you should fire off a thank you note to the prior administration for handing you a, what, $6 million-plus budget deficit for Christmas. And also, I've noticed over the years I've been coming down to Council, there are a lot of people that are very concerned about Albuquerque, New Mexico and this country. And this is the only place they can communicate to their representatives directly. And I don't think they expect miracles from you, but you know, Council has a lot of very important issues to deal with. If Council is unable to deal with these issues, why not give the public a forum, like Public Access, where they can find like-minded people so they can organize and do things on their own, of which Council is unable to or unwilling to do? And we used to have a public access station where you could come on with whatever it is that was bothering you or whatever it is that you wanted to entertain people with, and you could get it across to the public on your time. And if nobody wanted to listen to it, they didn't have to turn tune to it. You know, they could turn it off. But if people were interested, they could watch it. You could put our telephone number up and say, "Please contact me." You did it weekly, and you could keep abreast of what was going on with whatever it was that concerned you or whatever it is that you like to entertain people with. We don't have that. We haven't had that for the last five years. All these people that come here, they have concerns. They really... I believe they all want to do, you know, good things. The average person's decent. Give the lowriders a program that they could say, "What happened this week cruising up and down Central?" Give the pawnbrokers hour that they could say, "This is what we do. This is the service we provide, and this is what you're not being seen." Give us a podium where we can contact the public that will listen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, briefly.
Counselor Davis?
If I could ask staff, Ms. Yara, to clarify for us. I think, if I recall, and I think staff reminded me during those questions, the current GOV-TV Public Access Contract expires next week or so at the end of the year. So, I think the original intent with the extension last time was for us to appoint some members to the Cable Board, give an extension to the end of the year, and then to issue an RFP. Do I recall that correctly, and can we...
Yes, Mr. President, Counselor Davis, you are correct. The main contract with U-Public expired June 30th of this year, and it was extended through the end of December. During that time, I think they have made all the appointments to the Cable Board, and it has met, I know, at least once since then. I am unsure about the status of issuing the new RFP. I can check with the Purchasing Division tomorrow, but I'm not sure if the new administration has had time to review the issue.
Thank you, Ms. Yara. I realize it's not a public safety issue, so we probably have to do another short-term extension for that. But I think it's something we've heard about for some time now and been caring for it from the old administration and the old Council. Was a priority to be sure we try to get that out and start that process. Would be great to hopefully do that. So, we'd appreciate the administration's help in helping us get that out as we get things and people in place. Thanks.
Counselor Benton?
And I do acknowledge also, as Counselor Davis, that the administration has a lot on its plate to deal with right now. But this is something that I certainly have a lot of sympathy for, the group that lost their station. It really was... I mean, I had friends who had shows. I appeared many times on quote-unquote, just talking about a lot of the same things we talk about here and helping inform people. And there was every kind of show. It was a huge diversity of shows. And whether or not quote-unquote comes back, I think we really need to get this RFP out sooner rather than later, and I would just advocate for the shortest possible extension. I realize it's probably not a good thing in terms of branding and all that for the station to go dark. So, that was a lot of the rationale that was made, but... And I don't know whether the Cable Board is planning to weigh in or have they weighed in with regard to where we're heading with all of this, but I think we need to get a new RFP out there sooner rather than later. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chris Bregman?
Hello, Councilors. My name is Chris Bregman. I'm 23 years old. I'm currently a work-study tutor at CNM, but I'm also a gamer. According to numerous gaming websites, there's an estimated 2.2 billion gamers around the world. Recently, in this last November, a company named EA Electronic Arts put out a game called Star Wars Battlefront II. EA, with this game, has been practicing gambling tactics with this game and others. This is important because this targets children and gamers as well. So, the way they do it, they have this thing called loot boxes, which is basically a box that literally has items you need to be good at the game and excel at it. And to get these items, there's only two ways to do it. It's to get it through playing the game, which cannot work because you don't get them consistently, or you have to buy them. And in EA's game, Star Wars, you have to buy them. And these items that allow you to become better at the game are not guaranteed. Yes, they have items that can help you succeed, but they are not things that you can just go out and buy, use your money to get. This is where the gambling part comes in. There are things being done. A senator named Chris Lee from Hawaii is trying to draft a bill right now to make gambling practices like these illegal to gamers or people under the age of 21. And recently, countries such as Belgium, other countries like England and other countries in Asia have launched actual investigations into EA because of these practices. And these practices, of course, are only illegal and are causing legal consequences towards EA, but of course, these are not... Games are not made like that. Games are made for players to have fun, show their skill and to bring people together. EA, using these gambling tactics, destroys that, and it destroys gaming. And I wanted to build awareness for you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bregman. Next speaker is Diane McCash, followed by Edgar Salinas, followed by Alicia Sines, followed by Flora Lucero. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Diane McCash. With due respect for how much you do have on your plates right now, I would like to ask that you fast-track a resolution to ban ICE from our prisoner transfer station. I don't know what timeline, if any, you might have for formally and publicly rescinding Ex-Mayor Berry's and Ex-Chief Eden's invitation to ICE to the prisoner transfer station, but I believe it's important to do this sooner rather than later. Whether ICE has been there recently or not, the invitation stands as a community threat. As you know, Burnley County Commissioner's banned ICE from MDC earlier this year. If we don't follow suit and make it clear that ICE will not be allowed into our prisoner transfer station, we are doing residents and APD a disservice. We need to support APD's mission and policy to serve all residents. Per their own policy, they are not to routinely ask about a person's immigration status, but unless we clearly state that ICE is not welcome at the prisoner transfer station, we make these policies ambiguous. What good does it do if an APD officer concentrates on issues of public safety as per policy but then delivers a person in custody to the prisoner transfer center with a continuing question of a possibility of interacting with ICE there? We need to do everything we can to protect our immigrant communities, our neighbors and our families, and we need to do everything we can to allow for an increase in trust between APD and our community. Unambiguously separating our local law enforcement from Immigration Customs Enforcement is an important step toward alleviating some of the stress and mistrust between our community and law enforcement. Thank you.
Counselor Gibson, I think she has a question or a comment?
Comment, actually, maybe a question. We did pass a resolution that said that within the resolution, part of it was that no city... Actually, you know what it was? It wasn't a resolution, it was a memorial to, I think, a prior resolution that said that no city resources could be used by ICE, including space at the prisoner transport. And to my knowledge, it's... They're still not over there.
Right. I understand that, but also in a Journal article when all of this was kind of really big a few months ago, we heard about and saw copies of Mayor Berry and Chief Eden's letters to federal ICE people telling them that they were welcome. I think it was kind of them bowing and kowtowing to them to not try to lose federal money. Remember when that was all going on? But they said themselves, and remember, we have talked about it, of course, but you know, we got all those answers from them, that yes, that they had made the invitation and they re-upped their invitation here not too many months ago. So, that's what concerns me. That's why I think we need to rescind it publicly and unambiguously so that people know and our community members know that that's happened. So, that's my ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCash. Next speaker, Edgar Salinas, followed by Alicia Sines. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is Edgar Salinas, and I am here in support of a fair paid sick leave ordinance that will actually support all of Albuquerque workers. There are immediate personal reasons why I support a fair paid sick leave ordinance, but it's not just for myself. I belong to a bigger family, and I'm proud member of El Centro de Igualdad de Derechos and Office Workers Committee. Our membership of over 4,000 is mainly made up of low-income immigrants, workers that work hard every day for their families and to contribute to Albuquerque's economy. I live in Albuquerque, along with my wife and three children. Two of those children, they have autism, and they require special treatment, treatment that is based on appointments and, you know, different attentions. And I'm a worker. I don't have paid sick leave. I'm concerned that the ordinance to be introduced tonight, if passes in its current form, will be one of the worst in the country. I understand that it's a starting point, yes, but for it to leave over 90% of Albuquerque workers without benefit, that's just not fair. And I will not be eligible, nor would just about every member of El Centro. Workers like me shouldn't have to choose between caring for our loved ones and our jobs. Having children with autism... Having children with autism require me to miss some days of work through the year to attend therapy and other medical appointment. Another thing is, several months ago, my mother had an episode of diabetes, and I had to make a decision between going to work and get a full paycheck or taking my mom to the hospital. And that was, that was sad. And my story isn't unique. There is thousands of people here in Albuquerque, workers, that are in my position, and we all deserve to have this basic benefit.
Thank you, Ms. Salinas. Next speaker, Alicia Sines.
President, may I ask for additional time for translation?
You may.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Alicia Sines. Soy miembro de El Centro de Igualdad de Derechos. Estoy aquí para pedir apoyo para los trabajadores de Albuquerque. Cuando yo llegué por primera vez a Albuquerque, era madre soltera con cuatro hijos. Aunque tenía el apoyo de mi madre y cuidaba, ella cuidaba de mis hijos cuando se enfermaban, sé que hay miles de madres solteras trabajando sin algún apoyo alguno. Sorry, disculpen. Me preocupa que la propuesta que se va a introducir esta noche no cubra la gran mayoría de ellas. Les pido creen una política para todos los que trabajan aquí en Albuquerque. Gracias.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alicia Sines. I'm a member of Centro de Igualdad de Derechos. I'm here to ask for your support in support of a paid sick leave policy for all Albuquerque workers. When I first came to Albuquerque, I came as a single mother with four children. I did have the support of my mother, who would look after my children when they would become ill. Unfortunately, there are thousands of mothers, single mothers, that work without this kind of support. I am concerned that the current proposal that is about to introduce tonight just wouldn't cover many of these single mothers. I ask of the council that they create a policy that works for all Albuquerque workers, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, Jeremy Schment, and we've also got Flora Lucero. Go ahead. Flora, go ahead. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, President Sanchez and council members. Thank you for having me here tonight. A little more than a year ago, I was an armchair citizen who voted, then sat back on my couch, and watched the political process through my television set. On November 8th, 2016, I saw the undisputable evidence that our social-political system is broken. And after grieving, I got rid of my couch, I rolled up my sleeves, and I got to work. Because as Mahatma Gandhi so famously said, "We must be the change we wish to see in the world." Today, I ask you to do the same. We, the citizens of Albuquerque, New Mexico, need you to be the change we wish to see in this world. I am a native of this fair land. The roots of both sides of my family are deep, deep in the soil of this rich and fertile valley. Having lived here my entire life, I have never seen this city in such a desperate state. The sight of homeless, single people, couples, and families filling Coronado Park is heartbreaking. The crushing reality of the drug and mental health crisis we are facing, as evidenced daily, as we see the desperate people walking our streets, and the women who could be our daughters, granddaughters, and friends prostituting themselves in broad daylight. We need you to do your part as representatives on the council to work together with the new administration and to move us to a better place. We need you to step outside of your comfort zones and change. We need you to be the change we wish to see in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremy Schment, followed by Terry Storch, followed by Ron RC Casas, followed by the last speaker, Ellen Wegman. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, counsel. I like that term, a couch Democrat, where you elect your leaders, and then you send them off, and you say, "I trust you to do the right thing, and I'm not going to pay any attention." Now, I do have a note card with an eyeball on it, and I respectfully put that away. However, something has occurred to me that I would like to share with you, and that is that we cannot sit down as voters anymore and trust that everything's going to work out fine by going to sleep for two years and just going out for five minutes every November and voting and going home. So I just want to say that I'm happy to be out there supporting you all. I am working hard, knocking on doors to get you elected, and trying my best to understand the policies and to watch the policies, because the devil is now in the details. The front is not in the rhetoric. We're not having a battle over ideas. We all want security. We all want prosperity. We all want jobs. We all want a crime-free community. That's easy. What's hard is the details. How do we get there? And I feel like we've been gaslit. I feel like we've been given policies that say one thing, but do the other thing, right? We get all the high road, and they get all the money, right? We're saying, "Oh, well, we get, you know, justice," and they get the water rights. What I'm basically saying is that I'd like you to support a strong agenda that aligns with the voters who came out this November. We want incremental one. We want, we oppose Santalina. We want the myth of scarcity. We believe in that. We believe that there are funds that can help us with what we really prioritize, and they're not being spent on our priorities. So we want to see the details. We want to be an open and transparent process, and we want to be more inclusive, or more included in that process. So I thank you for hearing us, and I look forward to meeting with you more often.
Thank you. Terry Storch.
Good evening, President Sanchez, council members. Hello, my name is Terry Storch, and my remarks are spurred by the paid sick leave ordinance to be introduced by President Sanchez and Vice President Harris. For any major, important ordinance or law that the city council passes, citizen and voter input is fundamental and necessary if there's to be successful acceptance of that law. Bringing paid sick leave to Albuquerque's working people who do not have that important job protection is just such an important measure. The importance to Albuquerque of a comprehensive and inclusive earned paid sick leave law was demonstrated by the October vote, when virtually half of Albuquerque voters backed just such a comprehensive measure. Ms. Wagoner, who spoke before me, well-contrasted that initiative with the one that's going to be introduced by President Sanchez and Vice President Harris. And I understand from the Albuquerque Journal article that you are welcoming discussion of that, that it's not a closed door and a done deal. The council as a whole, and individual counselors, will best care for the well-being of the city and best represent their constituents if they recognize the need to work together. Bring all stakeholders to the table on the earned paid sick leave ordinance. Slow down the process. Get citizen input. Order studies. Importantly, ask to the table those who proposed and launched the initiative on the October ballot. The way Albuquerque does the citizens' business, and must do citizens' business, is with open doors and open process and informed deliberation. And it must invite and include people like Mr. Buffin, like Mr. Salinas, like Ms. Solis, who've already addressed the council about their own very real situations. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron RC Casas?
Casas.
Casas, you're next, followed by Ellen Wegman.
Where does the time go, right?
Can I get you to get one of these to all the city council? Yeah, thank you. Well, good evening, Enes Casas, and I appreciate it. First of all, I wanted to thank all of you guys that are on City Council, ladies and gentlemen, and you deserve a round of applause, even though it's not protocol for you guys to get that, for congratulations on your reelection. We, for those that re-elected and new on board, Ms. Cynthia, and of course, old-school Lawrence Rial. We appreciate you coming back and putting the city back in order, and Tim Keller, our new mayor. My name is Ron Casas, and I am the president of the Silver Platinum Downtown Neighborhood Association. The reason I gave you a card is because we finally were able to afford them. We started about two and a half years ago. We're in central downtown. Our borders are from Coal North to Mountain Road and Broadway the Redwood Tracks west to A Street with some jagged borders. And the reason I'm mentioning that is our website is silverplatinumdowntown.org, and we do things like have the downtown tours and several links on our website, which receives about 1,300 hits a month on our website. So what I wanted to bring to your attention was, first of all, congratulating you and having Chief Geyer as well. But the revitalization of downtown is finally going to happen with this new team to put together. So anything that comes across your guys' board, as far as approving things, additional parking, and some great things to revitalize downtown finally, I think we got the right team in place now to do that. And I just wanted to encourage you to please band together, and finally, let's get a revitalized downtown Albuquerque. It's about that time. We're about the only city in all the major metropolitan cities in the United States that don't have a revitalized downtown or vibrant downtown. So please pay close attention to any matters that come up and vote for the revitalization of downtown. And also, I wanted to point out the cruising also. I'd like to get on that board, too, because I was with the Low Rider Magazine. I toured with that magazine for six years, and I was with the Supernational's Car Show and did that for 14 years. So I do have a background on cruising, and I would certainly like to see cruising anywhere but downtown, central downtown, and maybe do it on the West Side, you know, where we have plenty of space to do that. And I'm open for questions, if you guys have any. Please.
RC, thank you.
All righty, and thank you. Please visit the website. Enes Casas, thanks a lot, sir.
Thank you. Last speaker is Ellen Wegman, under general public comment. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I didn't come here to speak about these two issues, but I'll mention them. First, the sick leave ordinance needs to call in sick. Second, coyote population is not just an animal welfare issue. If it's a public, if it's a public safety issue, killing coyotes increases the coyote population. Leaving them alone stabilizes it. So if there's concern about them, stop killing them. Last time I was in front of the council, I criticized the audit of the monitor, attacking a small party after sitting silent while the last administration stonewalled on police reform. I mentioned in a piece that the council seemed to be not concerned about the money paid to Scott Greenwood, and President Sanchez said, "Oh, but we audited Mr. Greenwood." Yeah, you approved, I can't remember, the figure was either $750,000 or $1 million in no-bid contracts for Mr. Greenwood, and you got back from him a fee that a hotel charge because he brought his dog to the room. This is not financial oversight. Now, we're learning that the council accepted the administration's rosy scenario on grocery receipts tax and unrealistic expectations for growth, and we're in a hole because nobody looked at what was behind the financial projections. We learned that ART doesn't have federal funding. Under this administration, ART might not get it. This is not responsible oversight, and if you're going to monitor pennies, that's not responsible oversight. So I'd ask you to look at things more than when millions are flying out the door, monitoring $100 or $200 is not the answer. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes general public comments. We are now under announcements. Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be an Albuquerque-Bernalillo County Government Commission meeting tomorrow, December 19th at 5:00 PM in the Vincent E. Griego Chambers.
Counselor Penya.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Albuquerque-Bernalillo County Water Utility Authority meeting scheduled for Wednesday, December 20th, has been canceled.
Thank you, Counselor Penya. We are now under public hearings, and this is Item A, AC 17-11. Frank Salazar, agent for Cherry Hills Civic Association, appeals the decision of the Environmental Planning Commission. I will turn this over to Mr. Melendros to please explain.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. This is an appeal of the EPC's approval of a zone map amendment from SU1 for church-related uses to SU1 for a senior facility and related uses and an associated site development plan for subdivision and building permit. The Adjacent Neighborhood Association, the Cherry Hills Civic Association, appealed to the city council on the matter. It was referred to the land use hearing officer. The land use hearing officer is recommending that this matter be remanded to the Environmental Planning Commission for rehearing in order to fully comply with minimum procedural requirements and to clarify certain of its findings. Specifically, the land use hearing officer determined that the EPC erred in declining to permit cross-examination during the hearing, and that some of the EPC's findings could also use some clarification upon remand. Accordingly, the Luho recommends that this matter go back to the EPC for rehearing before any final action could be taken on it at this level. This is an accept or reject hearing. You'll be considering whether or not to accept or reject the recommendation and findings of the land use hearing officer. If you have questions, I'll do my best to answer those from the record. If we cannot answer all those tonight, we can have a full hearing on this matter in two weeks.
Council Vice President Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Melendros, we chatted a little bit, and it seems that the appellant has a point that the EPC might have actually failed to honor a legal requirement.
Mr. President, Counsel Harris, that is correct.
I move that we accept the recommendations of the land use hearing officer.
We have a motion and a second to accept the decision by the land use hearing officer. Are there any questions? Counselor Jones.
I would also like to amend that and add that we accept the recommendations and the findings.
And that will include the recommendations and findings?
That's a friendly amendment.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed? That carries unanimously. Let's go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that is the confirmation. We were planning to take a dinner break, and we'll go through with the confirmations. Counselor Benton.
Mr. President, on Item A, AC 17-1, appointment of Sarita Nayer to the position of chief administrative officer, I move a be confirmed.
We have a motion and about four seconds. Are there any questions for Mrs. Nayer? Seeing none, all those in favor of the confirmation, say yes. Yes, opposed? That passes unanimously. Congratulations. Would you like to make any comments?
Council President Sanchez, members of the city council, just want to thank you for all the time that you've extended to myself and the rest of the executive team over the past couple of weeks in spending time with us, helping us to understand the priorities within your district and your priorities legislatively, and we look forward to working together. Thank you.
And we are looking forward to working with you. Next item is Item B, EC2, appointment of Suna Lee Stewart to the position of deputy chief administrative officer. I move confirmation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the confirmation of Suna Lee Stewart signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes? Any opposition? No? That carries unanimously. Would you like to make a couple of comments?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, one thing I learned in 15 years of public service is to keep it short when people are hungry, so I will keep it short. Thank you, I look forward to working with all of you.
And we look forward to working with you. Our next item is Item EC3, appointment of Sanjay Bhakta to the position of the chief financial officer. I move confirmation. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed? That passes unanimously. Mr. Bhakta, is he here to make any comments? Welcome.
Mr. President and members of the council, I would echo what just Suna said. We are hungry, and we are in the spirit of Christmas, so I'll keep it short. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you. Our next item is Item D, EC4, the appointment of Lawrence Rial to the position of chief operations officer. I move confirmation.
Second.
We have a motion and several seconds. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed? That passes unanimously. Welcome, Lawrence. Welcome, Lawrence.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I think I got a filibuster for a couple hours just because no one else took their time. Just kidding. Thank you very much, and look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, and we look forward to working with you. We will be taking a dinner break now. We will return in about 30 minutes.